Okay, good evening. Welcome to the regular City Council meeting for June the 4th, 2018. And as we start most City Council meetings, if we have someone from the audience that would like to talk to City Council, please come forward. We'd like to have, at least have, a name and tell us in three minutes or less what is on your mind. If we have no one taking that time spot, then I'm gonna talk for 15 minutes. No, I'm just kidding. So, this is a time for us to open mic, and this is different from someone that signs up for members to speak to Council. There's a sign-up sheet for that back there, if you'd like to do that. We will discuss, if you're gonna talk about something that we're gonna discuss on the agenda, please do that and bring it up here, and we'll call your name while we're in discussion on the agenda. So... Well, that was real popular, so why don't we move on? Would you call the roll, please?
Uh, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hammack.
Here.
Councilmember Hakeses.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Protam Smith.
Here.
Mayor Trotman.
Here. Thank you. Thank you all. Could we have the invocation by Pastor Alicia Swearingen? Thank you, Alicia. Would you all rise, please?
Oh, thank you so much for this time, Lord, we've always been... You're the giver, excuse me, you're the giver of good gifts. And so, we thank you for all the gifts to this community, God, from the bridge, to the beauty, to the trees, to the mountains, just everything you've given our city, God, all the people that are here, those that serve here, we just are so thankful. And now, we invite you into this time, and we pray that you would go before us as we just plan and make provision for our city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. So, at this time, are there any written requests of citizens to talk to Council?
I received none.
Okay, there are none. Thank you. Let's move on to Councilmember announcements. Are there announcements from Council?
I have one.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Um, a few weeks ago, it was in the paper, or it was being reported, that there were several feline cats that were taken down to the Humane Society, 68 to be exact, from one residence. And today, I stopped by, I stopped by the day they were brought in, but I stopped by today, and I was happy to learn that a lot of those cats have been nursed back to health. They were very sick when they came in. They've been nursed back to health. Several have been adopted out. And one, or actually, there were two where their top, they had a disease where their top lip had been kind of rotted away from a disease, and that disease is gone. Their top lip is still gone, but they're back to health. And so, I was, I was just really happy to see that our Humane Society and their supporters have worked so hard to, um, to bring these animals back to health, and they're, they're really looking at adopting them out. There's about 20 kittens still that are not old enough to be adopted, so if you're looking for a cat, or a kitten...
Who brought, can you disclose who brought the cats to the Humane Society?
Can I what?
Can you disclose who brought them? Did...
Um, I could, but I don't know who.
Okay.
It was one individual. Her landlord had passed away, and she had to move. The home was given back to some other owners, and it was just a kind of a, it had, she had to move.
Okay, I just, whether it was, uh, I don't know, Control Officer or the police or something like that?
No, no, it was an individual. She stepped forward, and she, she surrendered her cats. And they didn't charge her surrender fees. They just took them.
Wow.
So, they did a great job.
Thank you for mentioning that. Anyone else? Mr. Hammack?
Yes, I wanted to report, Mr. Mayor, that I did, and Council, that I did go to Durango this last weekend, had an opportunity. There was an event going on over there that my wife and I attended, but while we, while we were there, I made arrangements to stop and talk with the, with the mayor, the city administrator, and the assistant city administrator, and I will be reporting to Council on that. I'll prepare some written materials and some visuals. They're still struggling with their highway crossings, their 550 that goes through town, and I have some information there that I can share with Council that I think will be interesting.
When would you like to share that?
I'll...
Not tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay.
Let me get it done first.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to announce that we have General Government this Wednesday, June 6th at 4:00 p.m., and also a very important meeting next Tuesday, June 12th at 4:00 p.m., as well as where City Council officials and County Commissioner officials are meeting together to discuss the future of stormwater.
Great.
And it's gonna be a very important meeting. I really hope to see all of you there that can make it.
I'm sorry, say the date again?
June 12th at 4:00. It's a Tuesday.
Here. We're at...
Here at City Hall, and dinner will be provided.
Okay. What's your dinner? All right. Moving on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one, one more announcement.
Sure.
I wanted to thank our history museum for putting on a bike tour of historical locations downtown. I attended that on Saturday with my husband, and we had a great time. They did a really nice job of teaching the public about our historical buildings.
Great. Thank you.
Well, there, speaking of history museum, I'd also wanna extend a thank you. This year, they're doing day camps for children, and I signed up my kids for some of their day camps, some especially thankful to them.
Okay, well...
So, I thought it was fantastic. They have some really engaging classes. It'll be great.
I do. Thank you. Also, I want to announce on Wednesday, the first Wednesday of every month, the county mayors meet. I will be meeting with, there are six county mayors, believe it or not, in this county, and I meet, most of them will show up in this month. It will be at the City Hall at Coal Creek. And the reason most of us will show up is because the clerk of the Coal Creek, the town of Coal Creek, makes very good cinnamon buns.
Ooh!
I'm not, I'm not making, other than, I'm just throwing that out. Okay, thank you. It's a good time, good time. All right. Let's move on. Did you have something, Mr. Hammack?
No, I'm just wondering if, if she took that seriously.
No.
You're very interested to know.
Yeah, it does. So, we have, number seven is recognitions and proclamations. This evening, we're going to recognize some previous members of our Council. Recognition, we have for former Councilmember Kathleen Schumacher, as you know, moved to Oklahoma, and former Councilmember Dennis Weed, who is still here in Canyon City and doing quite well, I suppose, and Scott Ekstrom, who's, their term had run out, and also recognition of Kathy Olsh, who's in our audience, building official for attaining her certification. Now, should we go with the Councilmembers now, and then, all right?
And their plaques pretty much guide you.
Okay. All right. None of them are here?
No. Not one?
Not one. Do I get to keep them?
Sure.
No?
We can just move on.
Okay.
We just change the name?
I want to show for all of you that are, we have this very nice-looking plaque for the previous Councilpeople, thanking them for their service to our community and to our Council, and we will be getting that if they're not here. We have two of them are in town, and the, Ms. Schumachers, we will mail to her, or we demand she comes back to town, so... Okay. We'd like, we special recognize, is that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. Got a bunch of paperwork here. I missed a couple of meetings, and I got a lot of stuff I need to read, right? Okay. I'd like to call Kathy Olsh forward. You come to the podium there? Of course, Kathy Olsh is our building inspector, and we're very proud of Kathy. She has been, became a certified building official after completing all required testing on May 2nd, 2018. Kathy has been with the city for 19 years. Wow. And she's passed her building inspector exams between 2003 and 2005, and began the certification process for 2017. She's been a member of the Building Division team since February of 2003, and she took over the lead position in 2017. Would you just explain a little bit about your job, your position as Chief Building Inspector?
As the inspector or as the official?
The official?
Official.
Is that, they're not synonymous?
No, they're not.
They're not? Thank you. We needed a legal opinion on that, but it's not apparently, so, which would be Chief Building Official. That's what you do.
What do I do?
Sure.
Uh, we do a little bit of everything. We review house plans, we take phone calls, we go out on job sites, on inspections, take complaints, visit a lot of people, have to know a lot of code requirements, 'cause we're also building and mechanical, so we do quite a few things in that office.
Thank you. Again, thank you for passing this and for getting certified. When it says that, were you certified in all those other years, or this is specifically for this year?
No, I was certified as a building inspector back in 2003, and a mechanical inspector. Back in, between 2003 and 2004, I completed all my building inspector and mechanical inspector certifications.
Okay. Should we have Kathy come forward? We can give her her plaque? Let's do that. Come on up here, and, shall we go down and take a picture?
Sure.
You'd be expecting Mr. Quintero.
Steal it from the layer.
I like it.
Okay.
Okay.
Congratulations, Denise. You need to come and check my, what was the case?
Okay. Good job, Kathy.
(APPLAUSE). Should note as a point of information, I think there were four national exams that Kathy had to take over the course of almost a year and a half, and all of the studying and work towards the exam, she did on her time.
Wow.
Hundreds of hours of studying.
That's a lot of time. Thank you again, Kathy. Okay. Is, is Ms. Denise Warren in? Oh, there she is! Would you step forward here, Denise? Denise Warren, we're gonna recognize you this evening, Denise, because of your stepping up during our period of, our time of need. When our previous city clerk, Kathy Albee, resigned, Denise stepped up to help Council and staff alike during a challenging transition. Her historical perspective and hard work are tremendous value. Thank you, Denise, from the Council and staff. So, again, how long, how long you been with us, Denise?
In October. It'll be 20 years.
20 years.
Yeah.
And how, you're, you started when you were 10, is that...
Yeah, really.
That sounds better.
Five.
I cannot remember time, as long as I've been in town, that I didn't remember you being here.
I have a lot of people tell me that.
We've lasted a long time, so, thank you, and thank you again. So, we'd like to have you come up and give you a nice little plaque, okay?
(APPLAUSE). She just had to stay on there. Yeah.
Fine, I'll go.
Oh, yeah. Remember, you can, you can take, you can take this plaque to the county and you can cash it.
I heard that.
(LAUGHING).
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, young lady.
She's happy. Aw.
Yeah, I want to do everything.
We're gonna do that.
I have two proclamations.
I have two proclamations.
We appreciate you.
Also, I have a couple of proclamations. One is for Bike Week, Bike Month. We've expanded it from one week to four, so it's Bike Month, June 8, uh, June of 2018, uh, to June 2018, June 27th, as Bike Week to Work, Bike Month to Work.
Bike Month and Bike Today, Bike to Work Day. We've got a whole month of recognizing bicycles.
Oh, okay.
And one day to ride your bike to work.
Any specific day?
June 27th.
June 2, is that what that says?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, would you like me to read the proclamation? Whereas Colorado is a premier bicycling state, and the state of Colorado has designated each month, each June, as Bike Month to celebrate bicycling for transportation, fun, and health. And whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, and convenient form of transportation, and is an excellent way to enjoy Canyon City's scenic beauty. And whereas the city of Canyon City is dedicated to promoting, supporting, and celebrating safe bicycling, and whereas bicycling activities and attractions have a positive impact on Canyon City's economy and tourism industry, and stimulate economic development by making the area attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the outdoors and healthy lifestyle. And whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, and to reduce pollution and congestion, and therefore Canyon City calls upon citizens to participate in bicycle activities for improved health and community well-being, and designates June 2018 Bike Month and June 27, 2018 Bike to Work Day. Signed by me. So, okay? So, maybe next Council meeting, we should all bike to the Council meeting?
I think that's a great idea, Mr. Mayor.
You really do?
I will bike, but it won't be a bicycle.
No, no, John. Okay. The next proclamation is a proclamation for Geology Day, and I will also be speaking at the Geology Club meeting on June the 11th. But the proclamation I'll read there as well, what are you laughing at? Okay. So, whereas the Canyon City Geology Club held its first meeting in 1927, becoming a nonprofit educational club in 1928, and whereas through use of the Hayden Survey, the club learned that the first complete dinosaur remains known to science were discovered in the garden park by Professor Marsh of Yale University and Professor Cope of the Philadelphia Academy of Sciences. And whereas the Geology Club was the first geology club in Colorado to be a member of the American Federation of Mineralogical Society, and whereas the Geology Club was one of the first four geology clubs west of Mississippi, and whereas the Geology Club currently has over 60 active members who meet regularly, enjoying a variety of interesting speakers, and participate in a variety of field trips, and whereas the club strives to increase knowledge in earth sciences pertaining to minerals, gems, rocks, and fossils, and whereas the club encourages greater public interest and education in earth science throughout co, through cooperation and local educational institutions. Now, therefore, the city of Canyon City does hereby proclaim June 11, 2018 as Geology Day. Is anyone here for the Geology Club? Okay. I guess I'm the only old fossil here.
Now you're the one.
Now you, that's why you were laughing, isn't it? Okay, see if I recognize you. Anyway, okay. I would call for then, an adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Has everybody seen the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a movement that we adopt the agenda and consent agenda.
Second?
Second, Ms. Gonzalez. Thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Mr. Meisner?
There were just a number of minor corrections that I made that the clerk has done.
Yes.
That are in there?
Yes.
Uh... It's in public record now, so we're good.
Okay. Tony, would you like to go over anything on the consent agenda?
Sure. Item 8A, I won't go over every date, but those are 14, either regular special meetings or, or vision or general government meetings, and it includes your special meeting with the planning commission for the months of April and May. 8B would authorize the city administrator to sign the, the BEAT Auto Theft Through Law Enforcement grant that will provide the police department with a well-needed mounted license plate reader that will help reduce auto theft. The chief is here, if you have any questions on that, but we're averaging about one a week, one more than we want, and so this will be very significant. This technology allows an officer to drive down the street, pick up hundreds of license plates at the same time simultaneously, and if one is reported stolen, zero in on that vehicle. So, it's a very, very effective technology. 8C would authorize the mayor to sign an intergovernment agreement with the Canyon City Police Department, the school district, Fremont RE1, for two school resource officers. Uh, this is a continuation of a great partnership with the schools. They will pay 75% of the cost of the officer, the salary benefits and training, and the city picks up the other 25%. The 75% represents the school year, the 25% the summer that they're, we're working in the general community. But it's a win-win program, so they're currently designated at the high school and the middle school. 8D would, would accept the fire district's fire ban report. Right now, there, we have fairly critical fire conditions. Clearly, Durango underscores that. We're working with the fire chief and the police chief to look at whether we can still execute our fireworks displays on July 4th. We'll kind of probably get a reading hopefully by our meeting of June 18th, and inform you whether that's a viable option. If not, it would have to be postponed, we'd have it at some other time of the year, but we want to certainly weigh the consequences of, of doing that if we continue to have this very dry weather pattern. 8D would authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Innovative HR Solutions at a cost of $13,174 to conduct our, this will be our third consecutive employee survey. It's a survey, not all that dissimilar from the citizen survey, 63 questions, but all the questions are related to our employees. There's nine different kind of functional areas we look at. For example, the first year we did this, the number one issue was the health plan. The Council addressed that issue. The following year, after you addressed it, it was one of the most positive outcomes of the, of the survey versus being the most negative. This past year, salary was the most significant issue, and you took the step of adjusting salaries, so at least that, all our employees are at least at the minimum salary levels of our competitive peer sets, governments in South Colorado. So, it'll be interesting what the number one issue will be this year, but we'll, that's the purpose of it, is to identify what are the core issues among the majority of our employees, and how can we address them, and become a better organization, and support them in their ability to deliver critical services to the community. 8F unfortunately is the resignation of Councilmember Dorita, who's here in the audience. I don't know if he has anything to say, but Greg has, did he leave, made it, he's probably moving, 'cause that's what caused unfortunately his resignation. He moved into a home that unfortunately was outside the city, so what, what we've laid out here is a process to notify and recruit some candidates for Council consideration that hopefully you would make an appointment, probably either the first meeting in July or some special meeting in July. And then, gee, just receiving the list of bills.
And that is an at-large seat, or is that...
Yes, that's an at-large seat. So, we would expect, you know, I think you, you got seven or eight applicants for the first two opportunities. Caitlin's one of our beneficiaries, and, and I would expect we'd get at least, if not more than that, knowing it's an at-large seat. So, I would think all the candidates that applied before should apply again, and I think we'd get some extra people with a good diligent notification in advertising and marketing.
And that is about another two years.
Fulfill that term.
It was the original, Ms. Schumachers.
Yeah, she would have, her term would have expired November of 2020.
I think it was 19.
Next year.
And the past year.
That's right. She was, yeah, she was elected out, out, right, November 15.
Don't be adding years.
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to say that...
It was a good one of the last years.
I would like to be in attendance when we appoint the new council member. I am going out of town June 30th. I don't know if there's an opportunity either to have a special meeting for that by then, or else I might have to drive my boat into the middle of the lake where I can get cell phone reception and call in, so, like, I'd prefer to be here, but...
We will work with you to make that happen.
The middle of the lake?
Sounds like a rough life.
Yeah, I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm gonna be at the lake cabin for a few weeks.
You're grinning too much. Okay.
Just counting down the days.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay. Any other que, yes?
If nobody else has a question, I do.
I do.
Go ahead.
I just couldn't see me.
Miss Turner?
I do just have one quick question about item C, which is the school resource officer agreement.
Yes.
I just saw that McKinley School was accepted from the coverage, and I just wondered why.
Exempted?
Uh-huh. Do you know why they're excluded?
So, they're not included.
They're excluded.
Yeah. The chief, maybe you can speak to that. I didn't, that's some relationship within the school district as it relates to McKinley School?
Isn't it 'cause it's in the county?
Uh, that, that would explain it.
Okay. That's fine. I just thought there must be a reason, but it wasn't clear.
I wasn't exactly sure where it was located.
Okay. Thank you.
I have some questions for chief on this as well. For a couple of things.
That was my question.
Chief Harvey, we had, this past year, had met with some of the online schools that are, are here in town, the Goal Academy and EM Academy, and there was some discussion about SR officers for their facilities as well. Was that taken into consideration or possibilities with their funding to provide that?
No, Madam Mayor Protam and members of Council, that was not part of the discussion. The reason for that was this agreement was specifically with RE1, the Canyon City School District, and so it's a different funding stream and different school district than the Goal and other online schools that are in our city.
Okay. And I also had a question for the grant that we have, and, and part of that grant, it talked about having liable, that we would be held liable if there's any accidents or things like that, and I was wondering, are we prepared for that liability? And also, as far as having the training that's necessary and the quarterly meetings, and I saw that it's free for the first year, but is there future financial commitments?
No, ma'am. This, uh, this grant has been in existence for a while, and each agency that's participated has been fully funded for each year. So, now that we're actually, they've asked me to be a board member on this particular grant as well, and each year, those trainings and the equipment, any additional equipment that's needed or upgrades have been taken care of. Now, they're just like us, so if for some reason the state doesn't fund it, then if we wanted to continue that program at that point, we may have to come and make a decision on whether or not we want to actually fund that, but as long as the, the state legislature funds this program, they will fund all aspects of it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meisner, did you have a question?
Yes, I did.
Well, for, for Chief Harvey, or...
Oh, I always have a question for the chief. One, it sounds like he's got a cold.
Yeah.
Actually, I had a scope yesterday. I have a throat issue.
A throat issue?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I just got a, I, I just had a concern about the battle agreement, which I emailed to the chief and to the attorney and to the city administrator, but apparently it's not an issue that, it basically says, states that each agency will drive their own vehicles, and each agency will be responsible for their own vehicle repair, but in a case of an emergency, another agency could drive your vehicle. My question was, is if during an emergency, when somebody else is driving, the chief decision on whether or not we want to actually fund that. But as long as the state legislature funds this program, they will fund all aspects of it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meisner, did you have a question?
Yes, I did.
Well, for Chief Harvey, or?
Oh, I always have a question for the chief. One, it sounds like he's got a cold.
Yeah.
Actually, I had a scope yesterday. I have a throat issue.
A throat issue?
Yeah.
Okay. I just got a, I just had a concern about the battle agreement, which I emailed to the chief and to the attorney and to the city administrator, but apparently it's not an issue that it basically says, states that each agency will drive their own vehicles and each agency will be responsible for their own vehicle repair, but in a case of an emergency, another agency could drive your vehicle. My question was, is if during an emergency, when somebody else is driving the chief's vehicle, if they wreck it, who fixes it? And I guess we're assuming that that agency that was driving the vehicle when they damaged it would fix it. The odds are two million to one that it would ever happen, but it could happen.
So it is a good question, and it was a good pickup on your part, Councilman Meisner, but if the individual who's driving it is not our agency, then the agency who employs that individual would be responsible for any actions taken behind that wheel. That would include our own damaged vehicle.
Okay. And Chief Harvey, the other question is, we know that the school bond issue allows the schools to add extra protection, as in the high school, they'll put a pavilion out front, so you will not be able to access without going through some type of clearing. Would that change the SRO's job of any way, or is it, do you understand the question?
Yeah, so the physical security measures that the school district is trying to put in place are a way to enhance the existing security efforts of the school resource officers. So in addition to personnel that would be able to respond to an emergency, physical security is important as well. So they're not going to be responsible for those vestibules that you're referring to, but it will help enhance control measures for who's actually inside the school, and if somebody was trespassing at that point, they would, the school resource officer would be alerted the same way that they would any others, any other time. It's just now with the single designated point of entry, that's a controlled vestibule, much like Mountain View Court Knowledge, they're not able to get inside without that access. The other side to that is, if it is controlled access and we did have an emergency, other than the school resource officer, how would we and patrol be able to respond? And so we are talking through how to equip patrol to be able to enter that building quickly, but if all else fails, we have mechanical breaching tools and we can force the door open.
Okay. I guess my thinking was that the officer wouldn't, they're responsible as they are right now at the high school. They have someone picking, taking your driver's license and stuff like that, so that would stay the same. The officer is in the school itself.
Correct, and the people checking those licenses will continue to be school employees tasked with security.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Sir.
Any other questions?
Just one out of curiosity. Back to the battle grant. It says in the operational guidelines that whichever entity is more strict on the guidelines, you would follow those guidelines. Have you read it, the operational guidelines?
No, ma'am, I haven't read those.
I was just curious to know which guidelines were more strict.
And the guidelines that you're referring to is how the data is utilized that's captured on the LPR. So we would follow the Colorado State Patrol's guidelines on how that intelligence is used.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Meisner?
I'm done with the chief. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Harvey.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good luck with your throat. But I do have a question for the administrator.
Go right ahead.
Sir?
Yes.
In regards to the employee survey, is that finalized?
The survey instrument, yes. It's a standard instrument. This firm has used 50,000, no, yeah, 50,000 times around the country. Do you want to ask a question, if we can maybe insert it in there? Do you have a specific?
Well, my concern with all those employee surveys is, and it may be a moot question, but somewhere in there, it would be nice to ask a question about their level of confidence and the confidentiality of that survey.
That is asked.
Is that a specific question?
Yes, yes.
In terms of whether you trust the survey?
Yeah.
The confidentiality of the survey?
There's a question, and last year we had, for example, 84% participated, because confidentiality is a key element to the quality of the results, so that's a very important factor for them. First year, more important, as now we move on, they're very comfortable with the survey because they've seen the linkage between their input and your actions. So it's gained a lot of credibility. So if there are issues, you know, especially their top issues are addressed, it lets them know that we're listening and we're acting upon their concerns. So the issues that first arose here, because confidentiality was an issue, hey, you know, am I going to be safe conveying my true feelings and stuff? That was a legitimate concern, and that was asked in the survey. They also have the right to provide written responses, so about 63% of last year's response actually put stuff down in writing. And then we go out in a kind of a town hall fashion and debrief them on the survey and get more input, because any survey needs additional follow-up, and so those are opportunities to follow up and have basically focus groups with the employees. And they feel very open and candid in their feedback, which is great. That's exactly what we want. But it's linked to the fact that this council has responded to the chief needs identified by the survey. Each of the years we've done it. That's what gives us credibility.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So Tony, do you remember the percentage who participated the first year of the survey?
I think it was, I think it was like 88%. I mean, within a one or two people difference. So the national average is 75%. So again, just like the citizen survey, we tend to have a more active, engaged population for these surveys than the national averages in both these cases. So we want to continue that.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Do you happen to remember how much it cost to do this in prior years?
Approximately the same cost.
Okay, so it hasn't gone up too much?
No, no.
And have you noticed morale increasing with?
Yeah, if we look at the results overall from the first year to the second year, there was almost a 10% increase in overall score improvements, and so that's why we take this. We want to see if we continue to improve. That's our goal, is to have incremental improvements overall and in certain, again, these are broken down. For example, we're looking at job satisfaction, for example, staff development, employee management relations, competitive benefits, communications, teamwork, leadership, fair compensation. So we track those modules within the survey to see that we're making progress. And overall, last year, I think of the nine, we were up in seven and down in two, so those are things we follow. The largest concern was fair compensation. So when you addressed that issue with the salary survey and boosting the pay of almost 50% of our employees to take them to the minimum level of our peers, that struck a very positive chord.
So will we spend the time asking those questions again?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I would assume again, because, you know, we just got people to the minimum, that salary will probably still be the number one issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Have had enough discussion on that now?
I just have one thing. I have a couple of alterations or edits on some of the notes. Is that something I need to do publicly over this, or can I just give that to Jerry?
On the minute?
Yeah.
It should be done here, if it's going to be public record.
Okay, so I just have for April 2nd on page two, it asks on the third paragraph down. So staff responded to a question regarding the large amount of dirt at Centennial Park. It actually needs to be the large amount of dirt at Elm and Oak Creek raid for the carnival. And then on May 21st, meeting notes, page six.
May 21st?
Mm-hmm. Page six, about two-thirds of the way down, it says, "Mayor Pro Tem Smith and council member explained no votes due to items 19 and 20 being included in the survey." I would like to just put a period right there, "being included in the survey" and X-ing out suggesting this is better considered as a ballot measure, because that was not my opinion. And that's all I have. Thank you, Jerry.
Anything else before we go to vote or call the roll? Are we all happy?
Happy, yes.
All right. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Before we go on to discussion on the ordinances that we're going to work, talk about this evening, I wonder if we could just go ahead and ask if the administrator had some type of report for us, or have you pretty much covered everything?
Pretty much. Does she have any other questions?
You sort of talked out then, is it? Debriefed.
I'm getting a sore throat like the chief, I think.
Debriefed.
Yeah, but he had a reason.
Yeah.
I can make one.
Okay. Thank you. So let's move on to the adoption of ordinances, and so the first one up is the ordinance to rezone a certain real estate property in 924 and 928 Park and 821 Prescott Avenue. It's orders number 14, series of 2018. Would you read by title, please?
Ordinance number 14 is an ordinance rezoning certain real property within the city of Canyon City, Colorado, 924 and 928 Park Avenue and 921 Prescott, case number ZON 2018-002.
Okay. Now, this is the second reading, so we'll need to have a vote. We'll need a motion to approve on second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance to rezone certain real property at 924 and 928 Park Avenue, 921 Prescott Avenue upon second reading.
Second.
Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussion on that? Hearing, seeing none. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Number 10 is adoption of ordinance for the tourism promotion and November 6th lodging tax measure. It's orders number 15, series of 2018. This is a second reading, and would you read by title, please?
Ordinance number 15 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Canyon City, Colorado, referring a ballot issue to the registered electors of the city of Canyon City, providing for a 5% lodging tax to be imposed for the purpose of promoting and marketing tourism and tourism-related special events and activities in Canyon City and the Royal Gorge region.
Okay, the second reading couldn't, yeah, this is the second reading. Could I have a motion, please? Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance 15, series of 2018 on second reading, which is an ordinance for the city of Canyon City referring a ballot issue to the registered electors of the city of Canyon City, providing for a 5% lodging tax to impose for the purpose of promoting and marketing tourism and tourism-related special events and activities in Canyon City and the Royal Gorge region.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
Actually, I had a question. I should have asked this before, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
It says, at the very bottom of the ordinance on the first page, the very last paragraph, "Shall city of Canyon City's taxes be increased by $400,000?" And then in parentheses, it says $450,000.
Yeah. We had indicated at the last meeting, we adjusted that to take into account the new proposed hotel, the Holiday Inn Express, which will boost our revenues. So we don't want to leave any money on the table.
It's a little confusing.
Well, I think she's pointing out that there's a missing word. Is that right?
Yeah, there's a missing word there. By 400, it says by $400,000, and then in parentheses it says-
Yeah, it should be 450.
Yeah, so we need to fix that.
Can we amend that? Just to add that?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you make that change, and then we'll call the roll? All right. Is that okay, Mr. Meisner?
So do I have to make my motion again?
No, you just have to accept the amendment to your motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
I do, or everybody does.
You do?
You do. I'll accept it. Good catch.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
All we need to do is get this thing on the ballot with her on.
All right.
Yeah, that would not be good.
Which one would carry? Is it like a check?
I honestly do not know which one would carry.
You take the dollar amount, or you take the written amount?
It's always a written amount on a check.
Yeah, it would be a written amount.
The way it was written.
I honestly don't know. I don't know the answer.
We don't have to worry about that since you amended your motion, Mr. Meisner, so thank you so much. And thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Can we move on? Thank you. Would you call the roll?
It only matters if you go over. So if you only got $350,000, it wouldn't be an issue.
It's worth $50,000.
That's $50,000.
Okay. We're going to call the roll here. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
What, what?
We're calling the roll on the motion.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes. Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you so much. Number 11 is consideration of expansion of the board membership for the Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council. This is ordinance number 16, series of 2018. Would you read by title, please?
Yes, ordinance number 16 is an ordinance for first reading, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Canyon City, Colorado, amending section 2.78.020 and 2.78.030 of the Canyon City Municipal Code, expanding the membership of the Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council.
Okay, thinking this is the first reading. Could I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Oh, no, go.
You have a vote.
I make a motion that we...I've lost my verbiage. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance 16, series 2017, an ordinance for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, admitting sections 2.78.020 and 2.78.030 of the Canyon City Municipal Code, expanding the membership of the Royal Gorge Regional Tourism Council.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Ms. Turner?
Probably beat me to it, but I would just say that it's series 2018. I think you said 2017.
Yeah, 2018.
Okay. Are you seconding, Ms. Turner?
Sure, I can second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Number 12 is a consideration of the vacation of a public right-of-way to facilitate resale of private real estate without encumbrances. This is ordinance number 17. It is series of 2018. This is the first reading. Would you read by title, please?
Yes, this is an ordinance of the city of Canyon City, Colorado, vacating a public right-of-way in the city of Canyon City, Colorado, portions of South First Street and Highland
Okay. I would like, of course, our engineer, Mr. Lancaster, can we do that during the discussion period, because I'd like a motion and a second, and then we'll do it during discussion. Is that okay? Have I confused everybody? So I'd like a motion on that and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 17, series of 2018 by first reading.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hammack. Okay, discussion. Mr. Lancaster, would you enlighten us here?
Yes, thank you so much, and I apologize for the late notice on this. What happened is we, well, I'll explain further. It'll be clearer a little later on as I go through the explanation, but essentially, we have a private citizen who has a loan lock that we're trying to beat some deadlines on, and so this is, this push is simply to help out that citizen. So, and that citizen is Phyllis Geem. She owns some property on South First Street. There's a section there just east of what we think, or we call First Street Hill there by the cemetery. That whole area east there is quite a mess as far as right-of-way that's unused and discrepancies with boundary lines and encroachments on city right-of-way as well as private property amongst all the neighbors there. And Ms. Geem's representatives, her realtor and her attorney came to us and approached us with the problem they had with a pending sale where they had some encroachments with public right-of-way and wanted to perfect their title. And they wanted to go through the quiet title process, and we informed them that that wasn't the proper way to do it. And in looking at the situation, we recognized that Ms. Geem wasn't the only one with this situation, but her neighbors were, had the same problem. So we joined forces with that property owner, agreed on a cost share to do some surveying, and decided it would be best to do the vacation and subdivision exemption plat at the same time to clear up, clear up as many titles there as we could. And so we approached all the surrounding property owners, met with them, came up with where the property line should be based on the existing encumbrances, and decided that those portions of Highland Avenue and First Street we do not need. Interestingly enough, a very long time ago, portions of those right-of-ways were transferred to a property owner, they were vacated and transferred to property owner previously for the right-of-way that is now for the right-of-way that is now First Street Hill, they called it Diagonal Street at the time. And so, we're not sure why the rest of, the balance of those right-of-ways were not vacated at that time. There might have been some vision that they would be something at some point in time, but we recognize that there are no existing public improvements there now, only the private encroachments. There's no foreseeable public improvements there. We got feedback from the utility companies that they have no concern with this vacation. And so, the steps here would be to do this vacation, which is required to go by ordinance through you, and then we'll finish up the subdivision exemption plat, which is a staff-level approval, and we'll record all the documents together, hopefully in time for the Geems who have a contract with a buyer by the end of this month so that they can close on that. In the meantime, we have three other owners plus an outlot that the city will own, owns portion of that already, that will all be transferred with all new deeds, with new descriptions.
Any question, Mr. Lancaster? Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. This is really good, that is, I know, been up there and that's a mess, and this clears it up and does a good thing for the citizens in that area, so thanks again to everybody for doing that. So, no discussion, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, number fourteen is executive session. We're going to hold an executive conference or session with the city's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B, and to determine positions relative to matters that the city may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E regarding Black Hills franchise agreement. So, at this time, we will adjourn and start a executive session.